Time is five o'clock. I'd like to call the order to order the regular meeting of the school board. Mr. Chair, we have a roll call, please.
Director Sarr, here.
Director Rice, here.
Director Price, here. Director Lacy, here. Director Percy, here.
Here.
Here. Okay, the meeting's called to order. We have a forum. Item number two is public comments. Anybody wish to address the board at this time? I see no one. Item number three is a recognition of any guests or visitors, and we recognize Ebony, which is nice. Okay, item number four is the agenda. You have some changes to the agenda. There were additions under personnel. Item C is the motion of hiring Robert Kepler, who was custodian bus driver, high school afternoon shift. Item D is a motion to approve the hiring of Christine Olson to a long-term substitute at the Chisholm Elementary. Then, under administrative business, we've added three items. Item K, a motion to approve the proposal from Smart Lab Learning in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and five dollars for installation of the Smart Lab Studio. Item L is a motion to approve payment to DSC Communications in the amount of fifty-one thousand, six twenty for the digital radio bus. Digital bus radio. And item N is a motion to approve payment to Horizon Commercial Pool Supply for the demolition of pool filters. Okay. With those changes, we have a motion to approve the agenda.
Sorry.
By Jackie.
And Shelley.
And Shelley. Okay, any comments or questions on the agenda?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, again, once I'll express my disappointment. We're getting added to the agenda something that's about fifteen pages long with very little time to go through it and formulate any questions, should we have any, the Smart Lab proposal. I'll just express my thoughts on that.
Okay.
Access the board book. Okay, access the board book.
So that's the identical Smart Lab proposal that had been brought to the board roughly a month ago. And then the addition to that was the award letter from Lake Country. So it's the identical proposal with no changes.
I haven't had the opportunity to look through that. I'm sure that it's the same one.
Okay. Now, we have any other comments on the agenda? Okay. The motion in a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Moving on to item five, reports. Superintendent Norman?
I just want to give an update on CTC has done some behind-the-scenes work here on installing the new phones. They won't physically be installed until the bookends of our April vacation. But they did come in and hook up the services, and they're working on some of the panels. And there are a couple test phones in the district just to make sure we're up and running. They were really concerned about one thing, and they found it within about five minutes. So that was good news. And hopefully, come April, we'll be, pardon the pun, all dialed in on our new phones and operational because we have continued to have system failure since we've been working on this. I did put something in your packets about Starbase, or I included it in an earlier email. There's a lot of student names on some of the data, so I couldn't include the full sheets, but I did get a breakdown by classroom and student on their feedback. It was pretty exciting to hear them talk about it when they came back and share their excitement towards STEM. And just seeing the before-and-after data from them taking part of it was pretty neat. Last thing I have is the board chair from Hibbing and superintendent from Hibbing and myself and the chair from Chisholm sat down and had a discussion the other day, and it actually went really well. We talked about some strengths that we both have and some areas that we could focus on or we could look at collaboration. And I thought it was a very positive meeting. And any feedback you want to give on the meeting?
Well, what was kind of determined is that we have several areas within which we can look at collaborating. And there are things, you know, that may be a little bit difficult, more difficult, but you look at CNA. We don't have a program. They do. You look at industrial tech. We have a program. Broadcasting with the new TV studio. We have that. They can come over here. We talked about mental health and what both districts are trying to do for mental health, and it's a huge undertaking, and I get that. Swimming. You know, who knows what would happen if we had a different swimming notebook? I don't know.
So that was brought up due to possibly the pool being down this summer.
That's right.
Talking about collaborating spaces and things like that, so.
You know.
Just for the summer?
Well, depending on if we approve the new filter and air system, it could be.
And then the last thing that I can recall that we talked about was, you know, business services. How do we reframe that? How do we work that? And it's on the table. But one thing that is not on the table is that C word. It's consolidation. We're not interested. And so the next steps, Mr. Tom Watson, who is our facilitator, I guess you could call him. He wants an individual meeting with our board, just the six of us, individual meeting with Hibbing's board. And then he wants a, I guess, committee of three from each board to get together and come into some common ground and try to figure this out. Now, this isn't going to happen like this. It's going to take some time. I get that. But in order to facilitate moving ahead with things that benefit both districts, this has to be undertaken, and I believe that. So I think, you know, maybe April. I don't know. I don't know when this is going to take place, but we'll figure that out.
He was looking at the end of April because he wasn't available until mid-February.
So that's pretty much the whole meeting. And again, it's very positive, you know, just talking amongst the four of us who came up with some ideas. So it's pretty, it's pretty good. So we'll move on from there, and we'll see what happens.
Yeah, one of the themes that was very common was, you know, we need to be good neighbors and we need to work together when we can. And one of the areas that we discussed and continue to come up, the theme was, this is about kids. And if we keep the conversation about kids and what's best for kids, it'll be good for us and it'll be good for them. And so I would encourage you to have an open mind and bring things to the table, and if there's areas that we can work together, all the better.
Yeah, that's great. Anything else, Adrian?
That was all I had.
Okay. Next in line is Carla Winter.
Good evening. I am here hoping to hire a .5 title teacher and .5 art teacher for a few different reasons. When Alex and I met in the fall, we were looking at our Title I budget, and Title I is based on a grant, a yearly grant. And every year, it's about about two-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars, but it's kind of a swinging depending on free and reduced lunch. And so we have to wait for that to come in every fall. But when we're looking at our budget, we didn't have quite enough to hire a .5, so we were going to carry it to this, hopefully, this next year and be able to hire a .5 for that position so that we can get some extra support to our students that are in need of reading and path. We haven't been able to service the elementary here as much as we've been able to service down the fall. And so that's an area of need that we really need to look at. The other reason for the .5 art is that in twenty-two or twenty-three, twenty-four, there's new art standards that need to be implemented. And what this data is saying is that we need to offer at least three different areas in the arts. And right now, we're only offering music at the lower level. And so some of the other ones are dance, music, theater, and visual art. And so hoping that we could hire an art teacher then that can implement those more rigorous art standards that have come out like all the other standards that we're asking our kids to do. So thought of combining and looked at a schedule and was able to work out so that each classroom would have one art period once a week. And then they would have their music still two times a week so that we would be seeing that requirement on the art standards. And then also getting additional support for our students in reading. So that's the proposal, to be able to hire and inform with that. I just wanted to put that out there.
And are we thinking it would be one person that has .5 title, .5 art?
Yep. And it can be a generalist position, so they would just have to implement those art standards.
That's for next fall, Carm?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's the whole.
Sure. Yes, Mark.
Just wondering, is that something you would see normally, a .5 title and a .5 art? Is that?
Well, typically, typically, no, but there are some that have done art minors. And you can, again, you can hire a generalist, but if you had an art minor, somebody that was more creative or wanting to. There are just, there's some elementary teachers that are more arty than others. That would not have been me. I would have preferred doing more of the reading, but there are out there. So we would just, we would put in our hiring that it would be a generalist with an art focus, or if they had some art background, be able to support that.
And this would be for all schools?
All schools. Yep, yep, all schools. We worked it out one time a week, and then we can schedule in our .5 title. Yep.
Any other questions for Carla?
Is this something that we were able to put in our budget for next year?
We will put it in.
We will put it in if it gets in. Okay. Okay, yes.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Carla. Okay, moving on, Mr. Fredin.
Good evening, everybody. Couple things I have before you. Looking at, I'll start with the pool. So as I mentioned last meeting, we're looking at our pool filter system. And as we've had pump trailers over the last year, our pumps are at the age to where, or excuse me, our filters are at the age that once we sort of change out the media, the gaskets have potential leaking as they're at the end of their life. And so looking at this proposal, we change out the two filters and pumps and controller for the pool. We're looking at forty-five thousand, seventy-five dollars. Along with that comes demo costs. And that demo is at the price of nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars. And at the time of proposal, they typically do this in-house, but the pumper truck with the contractor that they typically use will not come up today and try to quick scramble and then go up for another bid, which was likely enough to get a verbal agreement. Maybe the media is costing about twenty-five hundred dollars, which I would have to, I can come back to you guys with at another time if you needed to see the numbers. But knowing that it's out there as part of that demo cost to get that filtration of sand and gravel out of the filters before you can disassemble them and cut them down and take them off. So that's what that requirement would be. So as this, as that full proposal would sit, it would be looking at fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and forty-three. If you took that nine-six-six-eight along with that twenty-five hundred, for a total of twelve thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight. And add otherwise, you could keep out that twenty-five hundred as you have the other two points ahead in front of you. Along with this piece is this Resco unit, which is our air handling dehumidification. And when we were looking at this with ARI and Gensa, we found that to do a one-for-one changeout, the current unit we had in there was actually underrated for the floor. And so we're looking at some engineering numbers, and that unit for one-for-one was a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So to get a bigger unit, it's going to be a little higher cost there. And then we have the dispensing of that one and labor to put the new one in. So maybe on those numbers. Where the money for this whole proposal is coming from is the part of the air quality grant that we received from San Jose County. So we're looking at the overall picture of pushing three hundred thousand, so almost half of that seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So this piece here before you is basically phase one, because this is on a timeline in order to schedule it through the summer because we have to empty the pool in order to get this worked out. The Resco unit, which is what the information came in later, that can be done at any time. We're going to put in the proper valve and things of that nature so that we can tie that all in seamlessly without having to drain the pool again. But this one here is the most critical one as far as to do this work when the pool is down over seven months. So we're ready to go. So that's the information I have on that. You have any questions about school pool filters and pumps and controller?
Mr. Chair.
Great. Mark.
So the ninety-eight hundred dollars is an addendum to their original proposal?
Yes, yes.
Because they do say demo and dispose of existing home filters.
Yeah, there should be, maybe the last page there.
So that's an addendum?
Yeah.
That's it.
How big are these filters? Just out of curiosity? Their things are six foot tall, nine and a half foot circumference.
And they're full of sand?
And they're full of sand and gravel. We have to get that out first.
And then you bring them?
Before we dismantle.
Oh, and then they, just that they were.
And so finding the full filter to take it out, because we had to bring in a new filter, filter and new, it's just easier to cut it and chop it up and bring it out piece by piece than it is. But the new ones, we're going to have to, you know, bring them in, you know, full. And there's in the doorway that'll have to be removed. You can see from these filters when they came in, there's actually concrete broken out to fit that cylinder in through that doorway.
So they can get this done in the summertime?
That's.
If we, and we enter the, empty the pool when?
We'd be looking at doing it late June as soon as their schedule.
Late June?
Okay, you know, so this, getting on their schedule is contingent of this approval. So we're hoping that once we approve it, we can still get on their schedule because it changes daily. So, but that's where it comes, that's our agenda.
So the other question is, I think I know the answer. You have to bring somebody in to take everything else? Like pick out those filters and take out?
And that's the, that's almost ten thousand dollars and nine.
Sixty-eight, okay.
That's the removable filters, correct?
Okay, I just have one silly question because it says on this proposal, unit price forty-five oh seventy-five. Total price forty-two oh seventy-five.
I think they had it written down.
They have it typed out, yeah.
Yes.
I hope, well, let's just say, okay, we'll go with the forty-two and we'll come back. Okay.
That was our sanderboard.
Okay, so, all right, so it's, that's the price. And I think, you know, we all know how important this pool is to us, and we have to have a functional pool. Dollars to it. Okay, any other questions for Mike?
Just a suggestion for my.
Sure.
You want seventy thousand gallons of water there? Is that what it said? Maybe prior to that, where you can contact the city to see if we can ask for forgiveness?
On the refill?
Yeah.
Yeah. And with that, which I'll be coming later, but too, since we have that drain as far as looking at full clean of that pool surface at that time as well. There's a couple different options whether, you know, with our guys actually scrubbing it and so on.
Well, they usually empty the pool, I mean, they empty the pool every year.
Yeah.
And they refill it, so.
But as far as there's other alternatives to transport it as well.
Emergency so they can ask for it.
Yeah. Well, that's great point. And I have been in touch with Larry. He knows what we're proposing to do. So, yeah. He's in the loop, and we've looked at some options to whether they can assist us in that sort of thing as well.
And then just for transparency, so you understand, we've been chasing Smart Lab. We've been chasing the pool stuff, and we've been asking for quotes and bids, and we're giving them to you in real time sometimes. And I understand your frustration. We're trying our best to get these ahead of time as we can, but the discussion has gone on for quite some time to prep you that these things are coming. Just so you understand, no one's trying to pull a fast one or anything else. We presented to you as much information as we had throughout the time.
All right, so no more questions on that one. And again, just want to get an understanding, and Alex, too, if you have a, that's where we find to have that, um, come from, for this project. For the air quality. Or the ground quality for that, correct. All right. Second item that's coming up for your approval tonight is radios, our communication with buses and the like. We've vetted a couple different vendors out there, looking at GPS, cameras, radio communications. And what we found out there was there are some innovative ways that we could tap in with iPads and so on and so forth for parent tracing, Brian to trace those buses, getting the fobs on the kids or just tapping the screen when they get on and off or alert zones. We could nail that in so parents on stop B of Route Seven could get this alert when that bus arrives there. Some of that, if we put a fob on a kid, kids are kids, they could end up changing, you know, give it to Billy, Billy gives it to Sally, and so on and so forth. So I think it's cautionary on that note. And then there's an additional cost, you know, the more vendors that we have had into this, one, there's a failure and so on and so forth. Then there's, you know, additional annual costs that come with that. We kind of threw a couple away right off the bat. So using DSC already in our bus systems, they have the capability of GPS. And as you go through and look at that, I had them pull it out as a separate line item, and it's sixteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars. With the new technologies that are out there, this is nice, but it only really gives Brian the opportunity to trace. And that's kind of what we want for now is control, some control on that. But that's all it offers is for him to have the software to find where the buses are. If we're a small enough district to where through getting on the radio, I think we can, we can probably find out where that bus is, you know, pretty easily without taking on that cost. But we do need to look at our radios. So this is the base station that we have currently. It's from, I don't know, eighties, maybe late seventies. It's been around. I have one I sent back. I thought I had to take this one out of Lisa's office because the other one didn't work at all, the spare one that they had. So this is in case you guys haven't seen it. This is our base station currently. And this is what I'm proposing and going to. This is one of our old radios. We only have four of these left, and they kind of work. But the one nice thing with the mobile is that you can take it and go. So if we have an emergency, we can still be in communications with everybody, and we're not tied to an office. You know, they do have capabilities of some of the weather. You know, so you can get some of that, emergency, weather emergencies and that sort of thing. So we would have that programmed in along with a couple other things. So I think going to a handheld is going to be a lot more efficient manner for us. And so I've come up with a couple different packages there as far as, there's two different types of radios. There is the SL three hundred, that's a little more streamlined, and the SL three thousand series, which would be looking at the thirty-five hundred E out of that. And the thirty-five hundred E comes with a five-year warranty. And that battery, you can leave that on the base station or on the power charger as a base station, and it's not going to hurt that battery. Whereas, you know, some radios, if you go down there constantly, they're going to dry out. So that would be good in the office setting or for certain personnel there. So I've identified fourteen of the thirty-five hundreds, and then we're looking at the SL three hundreds for custodial staff, paras, students, and so on. We're looking at up to seventeen radios. And so, and then with that, we could go with a service plan as well. And after talking with Steve at DSC, I don't feel we need that added cost because these are going to have warranties. We can add that at a later time. So he said, yeah, I just want to put all the numbers out there ahead of you what that could end up looking like. And so I think for two hundred and eighty dollars a month or four hundred roughly, I don't think we need to go that route for this, you know, for the new radios at this time anyways. And then we're also short some radios, and we have the older style radios and a couple of robustas that would be due for replacement or upgrades. And so we have six permanent installed radios for buses. So in this code, I guess what I'm looking at is up to that dollar amount. And then, like I said, depending on facts and discussions, you know, removing the GPS at this time. The last picture, or I sent one of these things out to you. So I did a communication study. I did have to kind of do that. So by putting a repeater on, right now, we do not have a repeater on our radio tower. So we can only go so far. So if we had a repeater, we would be able to, where anywhere it's green, we'd have communications. Where it's blue, it's kind of spotty depending on the weather, and then the white and gray, not so much. And the bottom picture is like, so if you put a light bulb on the top of that antenna, and right now, our current one is on this building, when we go to move it, we would move it to the top of the auditorium. There's a flat roof up there. But if you were to shine that light, that's basically the range of what that would look like as far as what you'd cast out for communications. So that's where the importance of that repeater would come in because we barely can hear the buses once they reach Hibbing or the south end. We go up to Side Lake on the north end, and we lose communications there. And then today's day and age, you know, using cell phones, yes, you can pull over. But there again, you're missing other communications that are, you know, if a child is lost or down on a bus or that sort of thing, we can get quicker response times if, you know, if everybody can hear the message at the same time, so.
Are all the, well, then in all the buses, they'll have these? They won't have like one of that?
No, so all the buses would have the ones that are mounted in there?
Mounted, is that okay?
Yeah, this is for personnel and other offices.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
The suburbs, the trucks, they don't have that.
Yeah, yeah. Our trucks as of right now, our truck's do have it permanently mounted in there, but as they age out, then we can, you know, look at what we can do as well.
Are you looking at a total of?
Well, the total for this proposal as it is, is fifty-one, six, twenty. There's formal savings if we.
No, I mean, I'm.
How many radios?
Oh, how many radios? Yeah. So we have the six. The ones that would be mounted for vehicles, and then we'd be looking up to forty-one radios with this, with this proposal.
And that would be included in the fifty-one thousand?
Yeah.
How everybody have their communications.
Yeah. And actually, if you took out the GPS, then that would bring that down to just shy of thirty-five thousand.
I was just asking that. Did you say you were thinking of that? We didn't need the GPS thing or?
I think we could, I think we can give up on that right now.
Because of the area that we're surfacing in.
Again, it depends on which way we want to go. We're talking with Alex as well. It sounds like this would qualify to be able to use under that face here, that COVID money as well, not the grant money, but COVID.
People's.
So that's all. So that's where we're looking at for this part of money as well.
And that's, that's a good, that's a good way to have a good use for it.
Yeah. There's about one point four million left, and we have to have to use it by September of two thousand and twenty-four.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I mean, we have plenty of ways to use it, but.
So like, this would be an effect for Uvalde or?
Yeah, we did. Actually, we'd try and get it, if we can catch that, the last month of the year, we'd even try to do that. It's just a matter of timing, what's getting, getting all the things. But yes, we have it running for sure by fall of twenty twenty-three here, so.
We have to have little trackers on those handhelds. Throw some tiles on there.
That's our, you know, I mean, I was looking at that as far as where we could, we could go down and share one. But if we assign one, you know, that's where.
Then you're responsible for, it's kind of like your COVID bill, I think it's your, it's your number.
Yeah, there are four hundred and sixty-six dollars to replace. There's your eight, you know.
Yeah, you can't say, well, I put it on the charger yesterday. Somebody else must have got it.
Yeah, well.
Exactly.
Yeah, I remember what we had right here. I'm not going to say I did. We were mine because I did for a few times. Usually it was in my janitor closet, but I definitely left it somewhere.
So that's where, you know, we can reduce that number of radios potentially too and share some of that. But as of, as of what I see for right now, up to thirty-five thousand is going to cover what our needs are with all the GPS.
And the GPS, we don't need that because.
We should find the buses.
So when we vetted other providers, they had a much slicker system than what DSC had. And the dollar amount for bang for your buck versus what you got. In, in DSC communications, you just had your, your bus manager would be able to track the buses. Other providers had some pretty slick apps where parents could see when kids were dropped off and picked up or en route and they would get alerts. And so if we were gonna explore that, I would say bang for your buck, you could probably find another provider that could do something that would, would, you cast a broader net and give you more um, options for more individuals, so.
But is that like, as a parent, I mean, that sounds to me like, I guess, anybody can track, any?
So, so I want, just to kind of give you an idea, one of the systems was about the size of a small iPad. And it had the students' names on bus one. And so stop A, you'd have three kids getting off of stop A or on and you would click the three kids. That would send an alert to uh, the parent or guardian that signed up for that app. And so um, many districts use that now. DSC communications only was the base station and the bus manager that would be able to track just the buses. Um, part of our struggles here are the amount of bus changes that happen daily. Um, whether they're going to dad, mom, parent, guardian, grandma. Um, so there, so this would give notifications and that's, that's what we fielded some of the most issues with. Uh, kind of dropped off at the wrong thing, uh, went on the wrong bus. And, and so it's part of the scheduling end of it, then that would set up the rosters and then the driver would be able to.
So then is this not the best way to go? Is it maybe?
That was the add-on for the GPS on this one and that's why we talked that this doesn't give us everything we really want. Cause seeing what other providers had, they had a much slicker app.
That doesn't give us the communication piece, or this, we need the communication piece, we need to have the radios. And uh, another feature of that would be if you had a sub buster, you know, a substitute bus driver, you could plug him around, we could walk him through, another nice feature, but breaking that down, we're looking at about twelve to thirteen thousand dollars annually for that system. So, you know, as far as bang for a buck, I think sticking, you know, with our radios, we do have uh, you know, cell phones if needed, but you know, there again, you can't keep everybody in loop as easily as you can picking up a radio and can, you know, call call, you know, type of thing too.
And you see, you were saying that the parents have to sign up for it, so they could choose not to.
Correct, yeah, in case their data charge is or whatever their plan is.
And well, it kind of sounds like the biggest problem is the communication and making sure that the radios are working in the range and area. As long as you can have communication with the bus and you can alert the bus driver of the changes or anything that's happening, so.
I would say three or four phone specs where they couldn't hear today, right at the end of the day. Um, and no one was at the base station at the bond and so came to the office here, but the call back didn't work, two or three attempts. Um, so.
Yeah.
And then there's other systems, I just had camera and GPS as well, we already have cameras. And we are looking at adding maybe a couple of cameras, one in the middle of the bus and it's got a kind of a complex uh, uh, view on it. You know, you can kind of see down a little bit more in the seats versus from the back sides or a stop arm camera. Um, if we had anybody running the, the stop arm, the light there. So those are some other options that we're looking into yet, but you know, whereas right now we just have the two cameras uh, or your facing there, so.
This will definitely be a step up, I mean. You know, I, I remember them calling me, somebody's kid was lost or something, they never got off the bus and.
Yeah.
They finally called me at home and asked me if I'd go up and call on the radio and yeah, I mean, it, it definitely is something that needs to be upgraded.
So, the proposal is for fifty-one thousand six-twenty. And if we don't go with the GPS thing, what is it, you want this motion to be for a different dollar amount?
Then that would, then we could go down to, I believe it's uh, thirty-four thousand seven hundred ninety-three dollars.
Thirty-four, seven, ninety-three.
And just so, there again, just so you're aware, right now they feel that this antenna is going to work. Um, but even when we go to move over to the school and this one comes down, it's gonna be about twenty-five hundred dollars to reattach that antenna to the other building and it's about twelve hundred bucks at this point right now for a newer updated antenna, so.
So without this GPS, we won't have that antenna?
No, we still have an antenna right now, which their.
That's what their, their base will work.
Their basing will work, you know, but uh, uh, but for right now, you know, those, so that could be an additional cost, but we, you know, for the approval of the whole project, that thirty-four, seven, ninety-three is gonna get us to where we need to be and if we have to.
And if we decide at a later date that we wanted to add the GPS?
We could, yes.
We could just add it, so, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, is that an annual cost for the GPS or is that just a one-time cost?
So that's uh, one time on that.
Okay. To add that feature, but I'm guessing is that have like a?
Well, the GPS actually, there would, there, there would be on a GPS, let's see. I guess there wasn't.
There was an annual cost, there was an upstart cost and then an annual cost.
Like a, so that you're paying for it.
And the services, you can see the different services that you could opt to buy into, you know, in advance or in premier, it's got a layout here. What some of those charges could be, like with any radios, you said we have a five-year warranty on that one. Uh, we'll be looking at a three-year on a, on a smaller one and uh, I don't feel to start operating anyways, it'd be worth our, our money. Yeah, add that service plan at this time, so. So yeah, to, to get where we, where we need to be, it would be thirty-four thousand seven hundred and sixty-three dollars, or seven hundred ninety-three dollars. Any other questions on that? Okay, and then the last thing is, we'll see uh, um, that we did an interview for um, custodian uh, bus driver. And that's for the post, that's been open for over a year, um, for the uh, industrial arts area, um, bus driver sports teams and that sort of thing. Um, we've been, we've been getting by through overtime and use of the paras and that sort of thing. We also have some retirements that are coming down the line and, and uh, just trying to get out ahead of the game since we have this opening that's been open to try and fill that position and, and kind of planning when we do know that when we merge together, we're gonna be looking at downsizing by uh, a daytime custodian and a, and an evening custodian, uh, for the elementaries potentially. And uh, uh, but there again, through attrition and, and uh, we're looking at how uh, to, to handle that way versus uh, lay anybody off. So we're being very mindful of the way, you know, we're looking at hiring, but yet at the same time, try not to burn out our, our personnel, so.
Anything else for Mike? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I did have one more item that I told us based to bring up this week on. Um, we did have a update from ARI and Jen said today, uh, going, going over um, some very, very um, I don't know what you'd call it, preliminary plans on the layouts of the, of the new building and parking and talked through some things. They're planning on doing uh, presentation to the board in the next month or so. What they really wanna do is do that second round of looping back with all the stakeholders so that they get the feedback after they were able to look at Grand Rapids and Rock Ridge and see other sites. And then um, see what tweaks or changes they needed to make to um, what the layout or flow or any of that would look like. And then um, they're meeting this Friday with the admin group team at one o'clock to also get that same feedback from that group. And then once they take all those together, it's gonna take them some time to tweak the feedback that they received. But what I will say is, they listened and I was very pleased to um, hear them talking through the lens of the folks that are gonna be in the trenches. And they talked about, this came up in our meeting and so we were able to do this. Or this was a safety feature that we had heard repeatedly, so we did this. Um, again, it's just boxes on a paper, but they did listen and, and took to heart the feedback. And then they uh, moved forward with some original uh, outlines of what it could look like. Now they're gonna go through that second phase and then they'll shore it up quite a bit and then they'll get it to you after they've had all the user group meetings, after those tours and um, feedback sessions. And then the admin team working through some of that with them as well. And even in the meeting uh, today, some things came like that, I thought were great, that you're, hopefully you'll feel the same way. But they listened and, and that was really important, so um, it's exciting stuff.
I think it was really great that they were able to do the tours, all the team and the teachers that wanted to and the staff that weren't too. Janitorial, I mean, there's just so many changes and they're the people that would know and something just doesn't make a lot of sense or.
Yeah, and some are getting feedback from some of the employee list like that, so it was kind of like, what were off of the grid, yeah. And, I mean.
Pretty exciting and they, you know, they even um, threw in a bell and whistle for the public.
More to come.
More to come.
I don't wanna overpromise something at this point in time, I'd rather. How's that fine tune things and we present it when it's ready to go to the next.
Okay. Okay, moving on to item six, um, approval of the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of the March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting. We have a motion. Moved by Cindy.
Support.
Moved by Danielle. Comments or questions on those minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? What carries? Moving on to item seven, personnel, item A. Motion to accept the resignation of Brady Bohm, pep club advisor effective June second, two thousand and twenty-three. Do we have a motion?
Okay.
Motion by Jackie.
Support.
Support by Mark. Comments or questions?
I just wanna say that Mr. Bames done a, a nice job. Shows some pretty good enthusiasm when I talk to him and.
Yeah, I agree.
It's probably a tougher job than we all think.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely. Okay, any other comments or questions?
Yeah, we're, we're gonna post it or?
Okay, we have a motion in a second to accept the resignation of Brady Bohm, pep club advisor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? What carries? Item B, a motion to accept the resignation from Donald Lallan, World Country Coach, effective March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three. We have a motion.
So may.
Motion by Shelley, sir support?
Support.
First, by Jackie. Comments or questions?
A lot of fans, thank you.
There's a lot of years and years of.
Look at these kids running.
Been around a while, has done a nice job, absolutely wonderful. Okay, we have a motion in a second to accept Don Lallan's resignation, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C is a motion to approve the hiring of Robert Kepler, the job number two-twenty. Custodian bus driver in the high school after main shift, effective April third, two thousand and twenty-three. Do we have a motion? So, motion by Mark.
Support.
Moved by Danielle. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, time of hire is five forty-four. Item D is a motion to approve the hiring of Christine Olson to job number two-seventeen, long-term substitute in Chisholm Elementary, effective April eleventh, two thousand twenty-three until approximately June second, two thousand and twenty-three. Do we have a motion?
So may.
Motion by Jackie, sir support? Moved by Cindy. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to administrative business, item A, a motion to approve the vision renewal with Blue Cross Blue Shield from September one, two thousand twenty-three to August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six as presented. Do we have a motion?
So may.
Motion by Shelley.
Support.
Support by Mark. Comments or questions?
Just, it looks like no change in the, the cost.
Yeah.
Just pretty good, no change in the program itself.
We just, yeah, this is just for vision. You know, I, I believe our renewal is coming up. For help.
We're sending this out April first.
Yeah.
I think we're having a bid opening on uh, May fifteenth or sixteenth.
Okay, okay. And our renewal date is the first of September.
Correct, yep.
Anyhow, um, we have a motion to approve the vision renewal with Blue Cross Blue Shield. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item B is a motion to approve the contract extension with teachers on a call from July first, two thousand and twenty-three to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five as presented. Do we have a motion?
Next motion.
Motion by Danielle. Moved by Shelley. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? What carries? Motion carries. Okay, item C is the motion to accept the proposal from Horizon Commercial Pools in the amount of forty-five thousand, seventy-five dollars for the upgrade of pool filters and pumps. Is their motion? So, motion by Mark.
Support.
Moved by Shelley. Comments or questions? All of in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? What carries?
Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm sorry. Mike, did they say once they start, how long it would take? I don't know if you said it either, but.
No, I, it's uh, should be less than ten days.
Oh, okay.
I don't think it could be, you know, it's kind of going off of one that we, that I was just kind of serving. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I can get that answer for you, Mark. You know, it's ten days and like.
I think, I think, you're puzzled right now.
You go on that?
Yes.
Item D is a motion to accept the Lake Country Power forty thousand dollar grant award for the Smart Lab Studio as presented. Is their motion?
So may.
By Jackie, there's support by Cindy. Any comments or questions?
And so, we're, it looks like we're still twenty thousand short on it?
Yeah, uh, when I did the ask, I felt it was important. We had some skin in the game on our end, which I also felt helped us get the award we got. So I asked for forty and we received one.
Do we have anybody going to the presentation then?
Um, I believe Mark and, and Brady are going to go since he will be teaching the journalism class.
Okay, yes.
Okay. Okay, we have a, any other questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion to accept the Lake Country Power forty thousand dollar grant. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? What carries? Okay. Um, policies are just the second reading?
Nope, we have, okay, and.
Oh, that policies are next.
Policies are next.
He's going in order.
He's going in order.
I will CD, I go in order. Okay, item E, second reading of policy number four-twenty, schools and employees with sexually transmitted infectious diseases and certain other communicable diseases and infectious conditions. Second reading, policy number four-twenty-one, gifts to employees and school board members. And G is second reading of policy number four-twenty-two, policies incorporated by reference. Item H is second reading of policy number four-twenty-three, employee-student relationships. Item I is a second reading of policy number four-twenty-four, license status. And item J is the second reading of policy number four-twenty-seven, workload limits for certain sector education teachers. And this is the second reading and we'll have one more reading to pass these.
And just for a point of order, if any of these get changed due to any of the new legislation, which could happen with the case management or caseloads, uh, we would just get the amended version from MSBA and, and approve it as an amended version.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item K, is a motion to approve the proposal from Smart Lab Learning. In the amount of fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and five dollars for installation and setup of the Smart Lab Studio as presented. Do we have a motion?
So may.
Motion by Shelley, is there support?
Support.
Produced by Jackie, comments or questions?
I see on the bid, it says furniture equipment, so that's beyond what we've already got for this part of the Smart Lab?
So this is the TV studio, this is the separate.
So this is a completely different.
Completely different. Yep.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the proposal from Smart Lab for fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and five dollars. All those in favor?
I am.
Opposed, what she carries? Item L, motion to approve payment to DSC Communications in the amount of thirty-four thousand seven hundred and ninety-three dollars. For digital bus radio purchase and installation as presented, we have a motion.
So may.
Motion by Jackie, is there support?
Support.
Produced by Cindy, comments or questions?
I'm sorry, I hearing is going, you did say thirty?
Thirty-four thousand seven hundred and ninety-three.
Just trusting God, my God.
So then we would just add, we needed to add the.
Hey, Mark, here. Okay, I'm good, this one doesn't work anyway, so anyhow, um so we have the motion to approve the payment to DSC Communications for thirty-four thousand seven hundred and ninety-three dollars. All those in favor?
I am.
Opposed, what she carries? And item M is a motion to approve payment to Horizon Commercial Pool Supply. In the amount of nine thousand six hundred and sixty dollars for the demolition of the pool filters, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion, but amended the price. The bid is actually nine thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars, not sixty.
I bet you're gonna add in the twenty-five hundred after, well, we can, I can put it on there.
And that twenty-five hundred also may change depending on how they get rid of it, so.
So wait, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
So with the amended price, I made the motion?
Yes, motion by Danielle to make it nine thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Is there a support?
Support.
Okay, support by Cindy. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I am.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Okay, item nine is a discussion, do we have any items that members would like to discuss?
Um the um.
The board's selfie doll.
Yes, the doll, we're going to, you have in your packet, it's just telling you what's gonna happen with it.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm gonna email you guys all the links, and then you just have so much time to take it. You know, like, you know, as as soon as you get it, I think, you know, um it doesn't take very long to take it. You know, I would say, you know, in a, within a couple weeks, you should have it done, and then, you know. MSBA will send us the report.
Okay.
So, it says it only takes twenty, twenty to twenty-five minutes to complete, I haven't done it yet because I thought, wow, I don't wanna. Know what what it is, but I haven't looked at it all, so it's. It's not much to take, and so it'll be, everyone here, I, Adrian also designed that, so, okay?
Are you sending it Cindy or?
I am, yep, I will.
Okay.
Direct it to you, she sent it to me and I have it and I'll just forward it to you.
I'll just finish it off on the weekend, I got nothing else, anyhow. Okay, and you have your enrollment numbers there, slight, a slight uptick, it's always good.
I was like to make, yeah, the sleep to twelfth grade classes and going down, yay.
Do we have a number for graduation?
I believe Mark shared that at his last update, and I don't remember off the top of my head.
It's one minute right now.
Forty-two?
Forty-two.
Okay, any other items for members? Bearing none, uh motion to adjourn is in order.
So may, support.
Motion by Jackie, supported by Shelley, all in favor?
I am.
Opposed, motion carries, five fifty-six.